We have a roll call, please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yeah.
Mr. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinter?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Nunical?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Hey, roll call. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull off the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none and hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there a second? Okay, tell us you two fight over who gets to be second.
I'm seconded.
It's not that serious.
We have a roll call, please.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinter?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Nunical?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next item is public comments. We have public. Would you like to comment?
The only comment I think I'll make is that the Friends of the Library are gonna have an exciting couple of week planned in October. We'll have more information about all the different activities that we're having, so.
Great, thank you.
Should do it now because of the next board meeting, the tail end of the week.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I don't have all the, I'm not part of that board, but essentially just high level, we're going to have several events that are being sponsored by the Friends of the Library. We're gonna have, I think there's Cherry Yoga is one of them. A couple other activities as well.
There's a half hour event on Saturday, October 26th with Melissa Isaacson.
Yes.
Which you are all invited to.
She's a local author, she's gonna have her books for sale, signing them. We're having a special Friends of the Library event only, a movie showing, the movie Dune. I don't remember the exact date of that, though.
It's Tuesday, October 18th.
It's gonna be posted.
Tuesday, October 18th.
October 18th. But we're gonna have all those times posted, all those events posted shortly in the bookstore and other parts of the library, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone public posting comments or? Move on to the next item, which is staff report, Kate.
So, just a couple things that I had mentioned in my report. One is that the Illinois Library Association Annual Conference is at Rosemont and it is October 18th to the 20th. Yes, I know what you're all thinking, it is the same week as the National Friends of the Library Week. It is true, they're doubling up on library stuff. But if anyone is interested in going either for a single day or all three days, trustee day is that Thursday, the 20th. I had put some of the programs that are happening in my report, but just let me or Anna know and we will get you registered. This is the first in-person conference since 2019, the last two have of course been virtual. And then we also have Hams in the Park this Saturday. We are finally, even though we've had it since 2019 or early 2020. We have the ham radio that the North Shore Radio Club has given to us. And we'll be doing the official unveiling, which was supposed to happen in May 2020. This Saturday, all of the board members are invited to come and attend. It's at 10:30, I think I may have put the time incorrectly in the packet as at 10:00. But if you would like to come, you can just show up, but if you are planning to come, if you could let me know, that would be great. We're gonna be doing a little ribbon cutting or picture up. And then the ham radio, the North Shore Radio Club will be doing demonstrations. And there's an interactive program happening, or a program on ham radios happening in the interactive classroom. And then we'll be also doing some stuff out in Tower Rink. So if you also have an interest in ham radio or know anyone that does, we hope you'll stop by. And that's happening all throughout the day on Saturday, but the kind of kickoff is at 10:30. And then we had, this past Saturday, we had Northbrook repairs. And we had over 30 people come with items to repair. A lot of electrical, we had some bikes, sewing. And it was really great to see the number of people. Our repair rate, Kathleen was still calculating it, but she said it was over 60%. And so she, which is great, because of course, we don't always know if stuff is repairable. But a lot of people walked away with things that were repaired and now don't have to go into the landfill. So that's exciting and we're excited to have that back. That's something that we did in 2019 and obviously had to pause and are looking forward to doing that more regularly. Some of the volunteers, in fact, said that they would be willing to do it even more regularly. So Kathleen and her staff are looking to see if we could do that so that we can hopefully help people get more stuff repaired and out of the landfill. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, Jennifer had sent an email yesterday. But with the organizational assessment that we did the listening session for. Rashida is, part of that is doing training and she has recommended we do some training prior to actually getting the report, just to kind of give a baseline before getting it. And so we have sent, Jennifer sent out a few dates. We have two options. One is doing it as like an all-day training with like a two and a half hours in the morning, two and a half in the afternoon. Or splitting it up into one half, one half day in person, then another half day virtually. Rashida's preference is an S that is to do it all in one day in person. But of course, we know schedules are challenging, so we were looking at Saturdays in October. So if you haven't yet, if you could take a look and let Jennifer know what your preference and availability are, that would be great.
When we talk about five hours, do we have a sense of what the time would be?
9:30 to 12:00 and then we'll eat lunch and then 1:00 to 3:30. So like 9:30 to 3:30 would be the.
It's gonna be a long day.
Yeah, basically. Yeah, with food.
But a long day.
Yes, I'm trying to distract with the food, it's not working. So, and then I'm happy to answer any other questions from my report.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, move to the board member report section. I'll start off, the caucus sent out emails to those of us who are on the ballot for the, or up, our terms are ending at the end of the current fiscal year. So if you received an email and are going to.
Jay, is that us?
What's that?
But is that us? Cause I've been like, wait, I didn't get it. But the caucus sometimes forgets about me.
Well, we can send it to you.
Yeah, I'll. Were you and I the same year?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Amy, you should get one.
No, I should have gotten one.
Yeah, it was more in K-1.
Right.
At the same time, and then Abby and Jamie are partners. And you now, but yeah.
When, and Jay, you got it?
I did a couple weeks ago.
And I thought I afforded it to you, Sharon, I afforded it.
I got it and I submitted mine.
It has to be in by the end of the month and then October is the interviews. And I think it was like October 21st, maybe was the meeting for the subcommittees. And then in November was the meeting for the caucus as a whole.
Yeah, I believe November 20th is the town hall meeting. October 30th is the caucus meeting where they vote on the first round of the slate. And then November 20th is the.
Wait, when is it? Can you say that?
October 30th is the caucus meeting and then November 20th is the town hall meeting.
Does it matter if we're not, I'm gonna be in India for the town hall meeting? Does that preclude me from?
No, it doesn't preclude you from running, it's just, you don't have to let them know you won't be able to be at the meeting.
Is it gonna be in person this year?
I have no information.
I would presume so.
Yeah.
I think the meeting was not in person.
It was virtual last time, it was virtual.
Yeah. I mean, the main, you remember the main thing that they do at the meeting is try and get signatures on the forms for submitting to the state.
So as long as I already have my signatures?
Yeah, you have to sign too, but you don't have to sign at the meeting, you can sign once you've been formally nominated.
I do believe that Abby is now an expert in petitioning from last time.
Am I?
Weren't you the one who was going?
Did you have to go door to door?
I went to like a couple of your houses and I would say that makes me an expert.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Depending upon whether or not, you know, if there's enough people that sign, you may or may not have to.
You need 50 signatures. I recommend getting 75 in case people say that they, because people, when you ask, won't tell you that they're not actually registered to vote. But the election is. In April.
But the purpose of the town hall was that you could easily get 75. But we don't know if it'll be well attended, I mean, so have to have them by that day?
No, so the caucus is an independent party. It is not part of the formal election process through the county. And so the petitions are actually due in December to the county clerk. And so normally the caucus actually is the one that submits them.
Right.
On behalf of the candidates, but there are other candidates that run outside of the caucus process. And they just fill out their own and then submit them.
That, when we were on Denmark.
Yeah.
So, and Sharon, we had that fun year where they didn't submit years.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was like my first year here and you were like, they didn't send me? And you had to do a writing.
Yeah, it's right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other board members or reporting thing to? Okay, seeing and hearing none. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. But before we go there, since that is, we need a closed session. Is there a motion to move the compensation philosophy discussion to after the new business?
I make a motion.
Thank you, Sharon. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I don't think we need to roll call that, so if we can get a voice vote, please, all of those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Oh, all right. We're gonna pass, so we'll move that to after the new business. First item in the new business is Cedar Lane project update.
Sure, so I had included a memo with some information as well as the, just a rough drawing of the work that is gonna be done. I'm sure as any of you that drove up today saw that the work is in process. So the, you know, long story short, the project is going ahead with a different scope and won't include any of the things that had been discussed for creating a pass-through for larger vehicles like the trucks and vans, et cetera, that had been more consistently hitting the building prior to the pandemic. So the option of creating a drive-through with the emergency pass-through at the village or putting kind of a drop-off area up on Cherry are no longer really options. And so the purpose tonight is to let you guys know that those options are off the table. But also to see if we want to look at options again, we had kind of been pausing and pandemic stuff and all sorts. And then the Cherry, the Cedar Lane project. Do we want to start looking at this again? If so, I can bring back all of those reports, because I don't know about you guys, but I do not remember them in detail anymore. Or to see if this is something that we want to just put on hold and hope that we, as we haven't had any issues, if that trend continues.
Just as kind of a reminder, we had about a nine-month period where trucks, independent of each other, got stuck underneath the underpass on the inside. And so after that happened, because there was repairs required both times with pipes having been hit and sealing and like, we were discussing the ideas of either on the south side of the building, trying to make it two directions so that there would be a way for the trucks to go into a spot, reverse out and then drive back towards Cedar so that they didn't have to go underneath or around the building. The other options that Kate described that were kind of taken out the table because of the village's plans. We're trying to have a right turn towards the village hall, going through the fire lane to make that a permanent, no longer available access point. And then the other option that was considered, but no longer available, was the idea of having some sort of area on Cedar that would be like full off, allowing the buses that camped underneath the building to be able to stop, drop off people on Cedar. There was a third or a fourth option, which was try and reverse the flow of traffic. That one seemed to be the least practical. Most practical seemed to be the idea of trying to make the south side two ways.
Two-way, yeah, that's what I thought.
But if we were to kind of move forward, look into it, that would probably be the more focus on.
Which one?
Begins of, making a two-way traffic on the south side.
I mean, other than people hitting that, that was the only reason for doing this, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and I remember the cost was pretty high, because we were talking about moving the flow of traffic and re, you know, configuring parking lots. Yeah, parking spots, like.
And if we want to look at that again, I can, we can put this on for next month and I can bring the report back and we can have a chance to look all of that over. I just wasn't.
The question really is how concerned are we that it might happen again? And that if it happens again, the damage may be significant, whether to the building, to the vehicle, to anyone involved as a passenger. And whether that's a significant issue for us that we want to try and look at making changes. Or do we want to, you know, wait and see if we need to at a future point in time? Part of the issues are gonna be, you know, we no longer have any ability to work with the village on changing some of the ingress and egress path.
Right.
For the parking lot. That was a hope that they would work with us, you know, with the design of Cedar at the time to try and widen it or change it a little bit to allow a little easier for going in and out, whether it was on two-way or otherwise. And then some of the things that the village was gonna do also on Cedar have been scrapped. Remember, they were gonna be making changes to the flow so that it would slow the actual traffic down and put in crossing that would be raised and things like that, which. Kate, if you're gonna do the.
You know, we were waiting to hear from Jack, he said it was flat, okay.
But it will have a flashing sign.
What are they doing out there? I'm sorry, are they not narrowing it now?
No.
No, the repaving basically and then putting in a four-way stop on the corner of Cherry and Cedar.
That weird stop where you have to stop.
Yeah, it's the staggered.
By the village hall.
Well, right out here, actually, it's gonna go from the opening at Greenbrier straight across here. So it'll be like right before the library entrance to the parking lot.
And it'll have with the, in the middle of the street, it'll have the, I mean, they're called the.
Like they have it by the school, at Greenbrier, probably, the flashing light.
What is in the middle of the street, though?
They were gonna have a thing. I don't, flashing or no?
Wasn't clear to me, they were putting something in the street.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they're actually putting something in the street.
Repaving and putting the.
Correct.
Adding giant planters.
Correct.
And no crosswalk?
No, there will be a crosswalk.
Crosswalk, but no.
Yeah. Um, seems like a big project, so what are they doing with the curbs? It seems like they ripped the curbs out.
They needed to make it handicap accessible, so they ripped out the curb right here at the entrance. So and probably at all the corners, so that all the corners got were.
And I can't tell from here, I don't know if more.
So we had two in nine months, we had one before that, I feel like we've had three in my six years or so, is that accurate, Jay?
I don't know the exact number.
And I might remember more closely.
You don't remember?
Remember the counts?
There have been a few over the years, but.
It was like three in six or seven years.
Do you remember more before that, Anna?
I know there's been two since I've worked here. That's all I can say.
There was two, there was two in nine months, that was.
Yeah.
Quick succession.
There were a couple before Kate came on board and then there were those two. But nothing as dramatic as the one truck that came and like.
The I-beam one.
Through, everybody just would hit the side panel. And we would have to fix that.
I say we table it. That's my vote, are we?
I agree, and not feeling the sense of urgency on such a large project with all of this going on, changing the flow.
Yeah, I think we.
I think that, you know, somewhere down the line, there is gonna be some landscaping and kind of paving around that are gonna have to be looked at. And it makes sense to do all of that at the same time, rather than the piecemeal, but at least have a plan at one time. The work isn't done sometime and it doesn't look like it's right.
Maybe you're shaking your head.
Oh, yeah, I'm good with.
You're in agreement?
Yeah, I mean.
Barbara, you look like you're in agreement. Okay, so it looks like the consensus is to table it and so mature projects may incorporate some form of it. Next item is the facility plan updates, Anna and Kate.
So we have a lovely presentation, if I can direct your attention to the screen. Anna's gonna actually take her way, so we're gonna go through the facility plan, but you did get in your packet, but I know it's a lot of information, so.
So in June of 2019, we retained BPC to create a facility plan. They walked through the library and they used reports from a prior company who had done the facility plan called floor design. And they created our plan. So what I did was I took that plan from 2019, I put in actual costs for fiscal year 2021 and 22. I added some projects that were not part of the original plan. We adjusted the timeline and we have projects for fiscal year 23 and then we pushed out some projects. Basically. So Kate broke the facility plan down into three or four groups. So these are the exterior projects when we redid the asphalt in the patron and staff parking lots and all of the source systems. We do some leaking in the penthouse. When we did the study room project, we asked the architects and cover to look at the penthouse wall, the penthouse walls and redid that. And then due to some rust on the interior of the building by the windows, we had the building repainted where we sand blessed the building. We did that right at the beginning of COVID. And same with the penthouse wall plating. And you can see all those projects came in under budget. We replaced the phone system right before COVID hit and that project came in budget, so that's awesome. And then we have the master plan projects, which are the renovation to staff and public spaces. The technical services maintenance remodel where we created space for maintenance and took the space and made it more efficient for technical services, the study room project. And where we showed that that project went over budget, there was an allocation between study rooms and the penthouse wall plating. And so it kind of, it shows it's over budget, but the total project was not. And then the first floor remodel, which included RFID and the automated handler and redoing the whole surf space. It's that, and then we started planning for fiction and media. And we kind of put that project on hold to think about some additional considerations.
It's like a delay.
And then we had mechanical, electrical plumbing, fire protection. Most of these projects were not part of the plan. Boiler room ventilation project. That one was part of the plan, or no, that one was not part of the plan, but the budget we received was just not a good budget. The fire sprinkler replacement project, we came in under budget on that. Pollock room lighting was not part of the plan. The system was put in in 2015, so we did not expect it to fail so quickly, but it did. So we had to replace that, the fire panel replacements, that was not part of the plan. And the budget number was bad, but now we have a non-proprietary, I can't think, addressable fire panel, which is great.
And just to add, because like this was something that I know Anna and I both learned about. We wanted to go the non-proprietary route because it gives us more options in terms of people that can service it, rather than just having to go to only one, obviously, company. And so that will hopefully, while of course, the project was over, it will hopefully net us cost savings in the long term because we'll have more options to be able to get more bids when there's needed repairs.
And it's also over budget because we had to be in compliance with current codes. And so we had to add additional sprinkler notifications. And then the fire pump replacement was not part of the budget and. So I kind of went through and said which projects weren't in the facility plan. But we need to upgrade our HVAC VAS system, which is the computer system that operates the air conditioning and the heat. And we will be starting that soon. And then the elevators were put in in 1999 and we need to think about doing that. Those were not part of the original plan either, but we have a good budget number from that, from our elevator.
What's the timeframe on that?
They're working right now, so we're all good. I mean, but within the next couple of years. No, nobody's gonna get trapped, it's solved.
I think it's in the, I think it was two years we put it in, or, yeah.
Sounds good. The current year projects were working on the steam humidification boiler, that bid went out last week. We had a walk-through yesterday, we had two bidders attend the walk-through, so that's a good thing. Like the automation, the HVAC automation project and then the window replacement project. That project went up really high just because the cost of glass just kept going through the roof until we could get the bid done and I was working with the insurance companies to see if they would reimburse us for any of the damage. Wish they did not. So our upcoming projects. Looking at the curves and the stairs and the, and you know, that's all the concrete repairs and replacements, the landscaping, the hardscaping, the railing, placing the light fixtures in the parking lot, the barreled roof, which our roofing company, we asked them every year, you know, does it need to be replaced? And they tell us that it's in really good shape. So that project actually was earlier. And because they keep telling me that it's okay, we just keep it in the facility plan, but we just keep picking it down the road until they tell us that it's necessary.
That from 1999 to?
Yes.
And they're coming out, Anna has them coming out now.
They come twice a year.
Just to make sure.
To look at the roof and do maintenance.
What's the typical lifespan for a barrel roof?
I think it's like 20 to 25 years and that's why, I think it's 20 and that's why we just, we keep kicking it because we haven't had to do, we haven't had any issues with it and they keep telling us we don't need to do anything.
Where is that, does that mean, is that both the second and third story or?
No, the main roof is a little bit further down the road from the bar. You know, it might make sense to combine those two projects when, you know, when the need is. But the main roof is also in the plan, but it's after 2026. Anything else? Okay, technology projects, security cameras, alarm system, access control, you know, with, so that we don't have to use keys and we can use SPAS or something like that. And then right now, our PA system is, is poor. We are using Ring Central as part of the phone system to help us with that, but that means you need to be close to a phone to hear the announcement. So we want to look into updating that. Updating that system as well. And then master plan for the next.
Oh, sorry, is it the same system that you use when you make library wide announcements?
Yes, like, okay.
Yeah, there are areas of the building, so OSG actually has done extensive testing to see which areas of the building you can't hear anything in. And it turns out there's a lot. Kelly's been working with them on that to just see just how.
Ineffective.
Yeah, and it turns out it was worse than we really realized, so.
It's a hardwired system, right?
But it was very, it was, it it's the existing system, the the way it was put in, it's. It wasn't.
It's more vintage now.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
If you're putting in a new system, would it be a hardwire system or would it be wireless with speakers throughout?
Well, I don't know, that's what we need to look. It would probably be easier for it to be a wireless system with speakers throughout. But I don't know if that's.
Yeah, especially because our building is steel and so a lot of stuff doesn't travel well through it.
And it would need to hook up to Ring Central, so you know, we need to kind of work with the phone system to see what. What the options are. The master plan projects for the next couple of years is redoing the third floor, both the staff and the patrons space. And then creating a space, a new space for middle school and high schoolers. And then for these projects with mechanical electrical plumbing and fire protection, the boilers were supposed to be replaced. Year like, they should have been replaced in like two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, but they're still working and they're operational. And Joe, you know, can maintain them so until. They really get bad, we're going to keep kind of kicking that one down the road. The air conditioners, the HVAC plumbing pumps, exhaust fans, and then there's the elevator replacement.
The boilers, how is that different than the project you're bidding?
Because we're bidding a steam humidification boiler.
Okay.
Not the boiler system. So the steam humidification puts humidity in the air, which helps the books. Helps the paper and books. It's not the actual like heating of the building.
Okay.
Think of it as just like a humidifier versus your. Alright, so some of the stuff that's going to be impacting construction projects. So Bloomberg has been reporting that supply chain issues are decreasing. I thought I was going to have to give a different update today and say, but based on the railroad strike. But now that doesn't look like that is going to be an issue, so yay. So hopefully we'll continue to see those decreasing. Construction costs, as you can see, are increasing quite dramatically and they expect that to continue well into two thousand twenty three. As units of local government, a lot of the people I've spoken to that have been doing public bids. Have been seeing them come in significantly higher, some even in the twenty to thirty percent higher range than what their costs had estimated. And then, of course, there is the new CHIPS Act, which is going to help with all of the technology stuff. Because of course focusing on ramping up production here in the US will make those much more accessible. There has definitely been, we've been experiencing delays in getting like new laptops and other computers and other, you know. I mean, everything cars, like I know the villages fleet, they said that there is now like a two year wait for new police and fire vehicles. Because of the need and the. So and then there's also, so in addition to just construction costs increasing. A lot of that is attributed to just the cost of materials, but also the construction worker shortage. And I will send out the slides after this. These all have links to articles if you want to read more. And so that also they expect to continue in two thousand twenty three. And so whether or not, you know, we want to wait on some of these things in the hopes that that. I mean, yes, construction costs always increase, they never decrease, but there is certainly strong indications. That the next year is going to continue to see numbers increasing pretty significantly. So, so with that, I just put together some questions of kind of things to consider. Which there are some things that are very much need based, like the steam humidification. There could be, you know, which projects could be postponed? Are there projects like some of the master plan projects? Could we do, you know, scaled down versions where it's more lighter renovation or just doing furniture replacement? And then also, does it make sense to perhaps combine some of these, as Maura was talking about with the parking lot stuff? Does it make sense to combine some of these for potential cost savings? Because you're bidding them all at once, you're cutting down on construction management costs as well as potentially labor costs. Because they can assign more people here for dedicated blocks of time. And then also things to consider are what would be impacted down the road for projects that if we did need to table them. And certainly there are projects in here that are much more need based. Anything that is key to the operation of the building, HVAC, water, the elevators are more crucial. There are other things that could be put on hold, but of course, the danger is always with postponing certain construction related projects. That there will end up being greater costs or costs that come in a more emergency time where it's like, oh, the steam humidification boiler. Just completely disintegrated and now we have to bring in people, you know, on an emergency basis and the costs are increased. So there's, of course, impacts each way. But just some of the things to think about as we talk about the budget. Because of course, the capital improvement plan or the capital improvement fund has certainly ample funds in it now. But if there are other shifts in costs, which we expect there to be. Like the cost of paper is massively increasing and that impacts book prices. That that could potentially impact how much money we are allocating for some of these projects. So some more questions than answers, but just questions to think about more as we look at the budget.
Will you and Anna provide us with a list of a need to do projects? Because I, you know, I just a way I would know which is the boiler system needs priority over. Concrete or whatever it is, so I would appreciate. From your standpoint.
It seems like a lot, that was a lot. That seemed like a lot of stuff. It is a lot of stuff. I know, you know. And big price tags too.
I think there's just some things that are, you have to do.
Yeah.
And then everything else.
I mean, obviously they're maintaining the things that they can, but it's interesting, yeah, it's.
So when we started the pandemic, we had a couple of projects that were immediately, you know, on the schedule. So we went through, we completed them and was able to be done without public being in the building, made it more efficient and quick. We also deferred a couple of projects to doing the second and third floors, the teen area and then the third floor remodel we deferred. Concerns. So as we were kind of moving into this second half of the year, I asked Kate to kind of remind us of what was on the list. So we kind of had a better idea of what to expect in the next couple of years. Because it seems like, you know, we've been somewhat reactive with some of the projects lately. But we haven't been focused on what we think time wise is going to be taking place over the next couple of years. And so I wanted us to be in a position to, you know, incorporate that into our thoughts when we're dealing with the budget at the end, well, the levy. The budget now, so that we kind of were mindful of some of these issues, especially with the inflationary nature of the economy right now. And then I also wanted us to be kind of thoughtful as to. I mean, and issues that Kate has raised. So it wasn't an idea that we're going to approve anything or not approve anything right now, just to be, you know, able to get an update or reminder. So that we knew what to expect. Having said that, if there's any other questions for Kate and Anna, we can move into the next item.
Thank you.
Alright, well, the next item is to discuss the next year's tax levy. So Anna and Kate.
Well, it just so happens that we have a presentation to go over the tax levy. Is this not so fun? Such a presentation heavy. Okay, sorry, I'm writing. Okay, so this is just pulled from here, so Anna's going to take us through kind of what we did to prepare. And then the levy that was in your packet and then I'm going to go through some of the factors to consider. That we considered and also just to consider in general state of the world.
So as I've done in prior years, I looked at prior year revenue and expenditure data to put together. Forecasted income statement. I took in mind our compensation. Of thoughts of, you know, how to. Pay staff equitably. That we're trying to focus efforts in the climate action plan, that we're trying to focus some efforts in equity diversity and inclusion. So, you know, taking all of those initiatives into account. Thinking about the facility plan, our technology plan that OSG and Kelly have worked on. To replace computers and different equipment around the building. And then just general increases in lines like insurance and software and.
So with this, some of the things that we look at when considering all of this is kind of what is the state of the world? And of course, as Anna already mentioned, and as you know, we have our salary benchmarking project that we are working on, which will certainly impact things. But there are also a number of other factors that influence us. The COLA increase or cost of living adjustment for social security for two thousand twenty three is estimated to. That it's going to be nine percent. Last year, you may recall, it was five point eight percent, which was also dramatically higher than it had been in over forty years. The CPI or consumer price index for the Chicago Naperville Elgin area. Is projecting an increase of eight point eight percent for goods and services. And Chicago minimum wage is now at fifteen, Illinois is moving up annually. And in January will now be at thirteen dollars an hour. And then the US Chamber of Commerce does kind of a state of the workplace. And there's currently, or I should say S of August, there was like eleven point two million open jobs. About sixty two, I should have written it down in here and I didn't, I'm like, I don't remember this number. It was sixty two point four percent of. Nope, I'm not going to remember the right number, so just ignore what I'm going to, was I going to say, because I don't want to say the wrong thing. So the long story short is. The job market is getting much more competitive, which we saw last year, but that continues to increase and even almost double down. And there are a significantly larger number of open jobs. Now, it's not like a one to one, certainly there are certain industries that are being harder hit than others. Libraries certainly are still seeing, you know, people leaving, they don't want to work public service. But of course, there's also industries like trucking that is experiencing major shortages, as I mentioned, construction workers. So the eleven point two million open jobs are not just like libraries. Don't worry on that front. And then, so in terms of where we're at. In versus what other libraries similarly sized or in our general geographic area. The state standard for libraries, the recommendation for the budgets are that sixty percent of the budget be spent on salaries. We're at fifty five and seventy percent total be spent on salary and benefits. And we're at sixty five, you can see we are either right in line with or under. The area library, so we're, I would say, keeping pace with where. Where other libraries of our size and budgets are, but still staying very much within the state recommendations. They, the state averages for salary percentage of budget ranges. From like anywhere from like fifty percent all the way up to many libraries have it closer to eighty percent, which is terrifying. So, so I think, so we're in, we're in pretty good shape with where we are now and could even. Increase this and still be very much within the recommendation for how much of the budget should be spent on salaries. In terms of our materials and programs, while salaries make up the majority of the budget and building costs are a lot. Materials and programs are what most people think of when they think about what is being used at the library. We're continuing to see a very high use of downloadables, just like construction, paper prices are increasing. We haven't really seen a major impact yet on book prices, but it's only a matter of time. I'm surprised that we, I mean, there have been incremental costs and I think that a number, well, they've said publishers are pausing or they're not. You know, they're publishing perhaps smaller stuff. It's been interesting to see. And so that is something that I expect is going to have major impact on our material prices. We spend about a million dollars, well, it's nine, nine hundred and forty nine thousand dollars in material purchases. And so that is a significant portion, which if we saw fourteen percent increase in that, obviously would be sizable amount. And then, of course, now we still have a variety of programming and we'll be continuing to offer a combination of in person, virtual and hybrid. And so that means having those money assigned for each of those. We're not anticipating programming is only about one point five percent of the budget, so it's a small number. But that certainly is something that we're thinking about. One of the things that the Climate Action Plan Committee has been working on is how can we do programming more sustainably? And of course, while there are many things that we can do to do that without any change in costs. There are also measures we can take that would see perhaps higher costs for materials if we went in a more sustainable route. And so they're still investigating all of that, so we don't know what that impact would be. Again, it's not going to be a major amount because programming is not a huge percentage of the budget, but it is just something to be aware of. Building and technology, I know that this is like exactly the same slide that you just saw. But I wanted to just reinforce that it applies not only to the capital funds, but also to just our regular ongoing operating costs. That are part of the operating budget, not just large capital projects. So last year, I guess it was in late twenty twenty, early twenty twenty one, when we had the CIRC moved up to the second floor for the first floor renovation. We had up people that were like, hey, can we buy your plywood that you used off of you? Because plywood prices were so high. It was like, it was like, we could have done like a black market in plywood. And and we're still seeing these delays, not just with technology, but just different building supplies, like Anna mentioned with the price of glass. And and that is going to continue, so that's something we just need to keep in mind. Our, our building costs for operating have been pretty static, but we might need to change that. If these costs continue to increase. So that kind of gives you the broad overview of what went into play. And I'm going to just, I should have cycled back to this, but so this is what the options Anna had laid out. And Anna, I don't know, do you want to go talk about just the different scenarios, how you, what the different scenarios all entail?
So I kept the total levy flat. I kept the operating levy flat and that decreased, okay, so if you keep the total levy flat. Because debt service, the amount that has to be paid in the bonds went up. The the operating fund amount goes down, so then I kept the operating levy flat. And it just goes up a little bit, so still it doesn't show that much of an increase. But based upon my estimates and where I think we need to be, I think we need approximately a five percent levy increase. And then I showed if we increased the operating fund three percent, what that would look like. And if we did a total increase of three percent, what that looks like.
What's the difference between 3% total levy and then the 3% operating, 2.6% total levy?
So these, this number went up 3%.
Oh, so you're just allocating it differently?
Yeah. And so then the total goes up 2.6. This number went up 3%. And so then this number goes up higher.
As far as I've been here, we've never gone as high as 5.3, have we?
No, I mean, there's a schedule included with materials. So the past 10 years roughly, we've had a concerted effort to keep the annual increases low. It's been a low interest rate environment for most of that time. We're now in a higher interest rate environment. We now have inflationary pressures. We're talking about the salary and compensation philosophy. So there's lots of things that kind of coming at the same point in time. Which I think Kate was pointing out are going to impact, you know, the levy and the budget. If you look historically, there have been periods where it's been in the sixes for several years. There are periods where it was, you know, above six and then substantial periods where it was below six. So five, 5.3, if we were to go there, would not be unprecedented. It just it's been a while since we were that high.
2013.
Yeah. Not quite 10 years. So.
And that it went so high that year because of the debt that we took out for the 2015 project, just like that was how it ended up so high.
And the 5.3 is the total increase with the operating. Your recommended.
It would be. It would be, that would be a 6% increase.
Now, what was the reason that 2019, we had such a
Negative.
Negative.
Because we kept the operate, we decreased the operating fund. I mean, I'd have to go back and look at my notes, but.
By 40,000 because we were moving.
Under budget?
The.
It wasn't. I think we
I was just curious.
Moved less into capital?
I'd have to look. I don't know off the top of my head.
Was that when we had the bond raised? Anna, for the projects?
We pay. No, because the bond was in 2015, this year 2015.
When we did the bond for not the first floor renovation, but the subsequent bond that we did for.
We didn't get the payment till this year 22. So do you see where the bond went up from 500 to 700?
Yeah.
I'd have to look. I don't know. We kept everything. I'd have to go back to my notes. I do not know these.
Change a little bit. So there's no decision to be made at this meeting. This is the first presentation. So that we can consider it. The next meeting will have more discussion. So if there's any items that anyone would like to ask Anna or Kate to consider or to make adjustments to. Any additional information anyone would like to have for the next meeting? Now's the time.
I just have one, one question or something that I remember, but not well is how this relates to the, doesn't this relate to the village levy? Like, don't we get?
I'm going to say it wrong. So as a village library, we do not have our own FEIN number and do not have the authority per state statute to levy our own funds. And so the way the statutes are written, we, the board approves the levy. We then send that to the village and their board has to approve it.
In the past, in the past, it's been no issue with our, whatever we approve being approved by the village.
Yeah.
We presume that'll say the same, but we don't know. Because there's been so many changes in personnel and everything, it would change.
So they probably likely, many people may not have seen an increase. I mean, I guess the most recent one was 4.2. So is there any additional information that we would need to provide them to secure this or?
Um, legally, they just have to approve it. They don't discuss it at all. They just pass the ordinance. We send them the info and then they pass it at the meeting. Certainly where there would be an issue is if our increase was such that it triggered truth and taxation hearing, which is anytime the total levy increase, which ours is included, you know, as part of the villages, but it's like a pretty small percentage, it was over 5%. So if we were a library district, we would have to do a truth and taxation hearing if we were.
I think that's what I was remembering.
Yeah. Yeah. So 5%, but it's not 5% for us. It's 5% as the total village budget. So I think we would have to increase our budget by like 40% or something in order to trigger that if the village cut there.
Yeah. But that raises the question is whether the village itself will have a significant increase.
Because of the sales tax and.
Just period.
I think what, I mean, what I'm going to do because they want an estimate number, I'm going to provide them with the highest number on the sheet. And, and if they push back, then that will also help us determine what our levy needs to be, right?
Right.
But they want that so that they can start their discussions rather than waiting. So I would like to be able to give her that 5% number. And then have them have their discussions.
Okay, let's do that.
Need to make a motion on that or no?
No, because it's just a draft. I mean, this is just an estimate and I'll make that, make her very well aware that it's like we're not.
You have feedback before the October meeting or will you not get feedback until?
I, I can ask her when they can provide feedback if this number is doing something to them.
Okay. Are there any other piece of information anyone wants? Any items, look at the light items, any light items, anyone has questions about? No, we're not voting at this meeting.
I know. When do we?
Oh, we're going to vote either October, November, depending upon where we stand and what kind of feedback we get. The board, the village board needs to have it after our November meeting with our December meetings because they have to in December to latest. Stacy, any questions that you might have? First call rounds.
I know. Yeah.
All right. And since there's no more questions, we can go on to the next item on the agenda, the closing schedule.
So oddly enough, I happen to have a presentation. Sorry, guys. I know this is a lot in this meeting. So hang on one second. Let me share this screen. Yeah, again. Okay, so I wanted to kind of walk you through what I had proposed with the closing schedule for this year and give you some more information that doesn't really, isn't really easy to parse out when you're just looking at a memo. So there we go. Okay, so the request I made in the memo was to close the library from December 29th to January 3rd and give, this would give full-time staff an additional 12 holiday hours and then pay regular part-time and part-time staff for the scheduled hours they have during that time, which is approximately $10,000 to just address the increased stress of staff during the past two years. So what does that actually look like by the numbers? So there's like a delay. So I have to just make sure that you guys are seeing what I'm seeing on my screen. Otherwise, it's not going to make sense. So school break obviously happens around this time. And this shows what school break looks like. So school break starts the 16th is the last day of school and they go back to school on January 3rd. So during this time, you can see the busier time is when is typically the beginning of the break when people are coming in before taking off or getting materials and then typically gets quieter as the towards the latter part of the break. So one of the things that you can see here, I know this is a lot of information, is that the library is open for eight of the 16 days that the school break is happening. The red items are the ones where we would be closed normally. So those are dates that would be typical. And the 31st on New Year's Eve, we typically, not typically, we have a closing at three o'clock and give two holiday hours for that time. So it's like a partial close. And then what that will look like in terms of staff is staff because of the holidays falling on a weekend this year will actually receive three floating holidays for the, you know, 24th, 25th and January 1st. And then that additional two hours of floating holiday on New Year's Eve. And so what we would do is require that those floating holidays be used on the 29th, 30th and 2nd. And then sorry, you guys can't really see. Oh, I can't move that, can I? Nope, that's on Patrick's end. And then part-time workers would be paid for the hours that they are scheduled for during that time. And so I can't move anything. Oh, because I'm sorry. Okay, okay. And so that would give staff those additional 12 hours. Now, this is full-time staff, right? Where I didn't want to give you a million scenarios. So we're focusing on full-time staff. And so 12 hours is approximately just, just under two additional holiday days. So there's no additional costs. Like this isn't changing the budget at all, but I wanted you guys to know what the cost in holiday pay is essentially, right? And so it's about $20,000 for full-time staff for those two extra days of holiday. And then we estimate it's about $10,000 for regular part-time and part-time staff. And again, this isn't changing the budget. It is simply going to afford. It is just to give you an idea of what the numbers are.
I don't get those numbers. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
He's because he once I said, okay, how it looks at numbers. So I see those aren't numbers. Now you're saying $20,000. What, what, what is that?
Okay, so the $20,000 is how much it's going to cost us to pay 12 holiday hours to each person. They're going to get the money regardless. So it's essentially like saying, hey, you normally, you know, we normally pay you to do this, you know, work these 12 hours. You get the same salary regardless. But instead of saying that it's work time, we're going to say that it's now holiday time. And that holiday time, the cost, if you calculate the hourly cost by each person would cost about $20,000.
Person and.
No, no, no. Total, total for the whole, for all of the full-time staff total.
Extra day and a half of vacation costs $20,000, but other, you'd be paying them to work that time anyway.
Yeah. Yeah. So the budget doesn't change. But that's just what the cost would be if you were paying like hard time or regular part-time. If full-time didn't have a sale, if you were just paying them the hours.
Is this being considered as a possible sort of, this is the way it would be going forward? Or is this a sort of like the past few years have been really traumatic? Where this is sort of like a one-time bonus? Or is this sort of like, we're looking at doing this?
I wanted to see what the board thought. I mean, I, obviously, this is, you know, library work continues to get more stressful. So that, that is not changing. And it's kind of crazy to say that, right? Because it's like, how hard can it be? You work in a library. Kelly, last Friday, had to deal with a pretty challenging situation at closing where there was a guy passed out. And it was like, first of all, is he still alive? What's going on? Is he injured? He was not in the best shape. We ended up calling the paramedics. He was, Kelly ended up staying like an extra hour dealing with this patron, working with police and EMTs. And that is something that is becoming not someone passing out and having, you know, medical issues, but it's just more and more frequently, we're seeing people coming here. We, we saw a huge increase during the two years when the state did not have a budget and a lot of social service agencies closed. A lot of people started coming to the library because they needed somewhere to go and like, where else are they going to go? And so we've seen a pretty significant increase in libraries in general. I wouldn't say that we're, it's not the same as going to like Harold Washington Library downtown, but but we're continuing to see that just increase year over year, even during the pandemic, when we've, we're seeing fewer people in the building. So, so basically, I, I'm hoping for this year, it would certainly be helpful and it would certainly be wonderful to consider for future years. And maybe not necessarily in this format, but just as a way of recognizing the work that, you know, work, the the energy it takes to, to work with the public and to provide the level of service that we want to provide. So I have a couple more numbers. So in terms of our door counts, December is typically at about 66% of the rest of the year. Our busiest months are June and July with April and September being closed seconds. And so while we certainly do see people in the library in December, it is typically at a lower amount. So why, why even consider this? Well, as I mentioned and shared with you a couple of months ago, there, the Urban Library Council did the trauma study and it does show that there is a significant impact on staff working with the populations experiencing homelessness, mental illness, et cetera. We also know that stress has a significant impact on productivity. So just from a business perspective, giving staff time to decompress and, and reduce stress will actually help workplace efficiency. And and I know that I, you know, I jokingly have jokingly, okay, not really jokingly, like say like, well, my brain is broken, like my brain is not processing information the same way it was. And I know I am not the only one here that that is happening too. And so, so that certainly would, I'm not saying fix everyone's brains, but it would certainly help in terms of reducing stress and then therefore increasing productivity. So of course, with this, we have to consider that there are impacts to this. Certainly, closing the library means that patrons would not be able to get in and get physical materials during this time. We also know that it would require some prep work for staff to get ready to even do a closing like of more than a day or two. And so getting all of that wrapped up. And of course, we know that there is the potential to have patrons be upset that the library is not going to be open. And why are we doing this? And, and certainly, just as we have with every step of the pandemic, we have seen people that have praised us for like, thank you for taking safety first. And we have people that have said, why are you doing this? This is so ridiculous and you need to just let this go. And I expect that with this, as with any decision that impacts people wanting to use the library, there will be both of those types of comments, but that is certainly something for us to be aware of because that is a challenge. And one that the board would, of course, potentially be impacted by out in the community. And so one of the things to one of the things, that was a long delay to think about is whether or not this would be, was this effective? Like, would doing something like this, like, I think it's going to be really helpful, but how do we actually know? And so regardless of whether the board would want to consider doing anything like this again in the future, I do think it's helpful to reflect if the board wants to move forward that we would look at, what are those patron comments? What did staff say? Did they see a decrease in their stress levels? Did they feel that it helped? Looking at the door counts before and after, did we see more people coming in before as a result of this? And then looking at the circulation numbers, did we see people like just loading up and then bringing stuff back all in one fell loading up and then bringing stuff back all in one fell swoop. So I think that there is, I think it's important to look at this regardless of what any consideration would be moving forward just to determine the efficacy of, did it meet its intended goal of helping staff with giving them some time off to decompress and
for interrupting, for gauging success. One of the factors that you present is that increases productivity. There is no way of, how are you going to?
That's a great question. I, it is hard to it is much harder to, you know, we're not, it's harder to gauge productivity when we're talking about thought work, right? Because it is often not a, like, we're not making widgets in a factory. But that is certainly something that I think we can get feedback from staff on. Do they feel that their productivity has increased? We certainly know that there are many projects we put on hold. If we're able to gauge, if we're now able to reintroduce those projects cuz staff have better bandwidth and are able to work more efficiently. I think that would be a way that we could look at it, but I would have to think some more too, if there are other ways that we could gauge that cuz yeah, go ahead.
There was also the stress level that you mentioned too, like, could we do a survey like?
Oh, yeah, I would do one before and one after, right? Cuz you need the baseline in order
Ask some questions about productivity to their perception of their productivity.
Yeah, and that that is something that I think is a little bit harder to ask because, of course, staff are not want gonna wanna say like, well, I don't feel like I'm productive at all, right? Like, cuz that would see that. But I think that there are other, yes, that there are things we
Is that you could say it though, like, I don't know what those ways would pay you at. You know, to touch on those topics, employee surveys ask about those kinds of things, you know, whether or not it's completely objective, I understand, but.
Yeah, I've done a number of staffing analysis analyses through the years. And one of the things that's always fascinating is people have no concept, if you ask them to estimate how much time things take, how much time things take. They they're always way up and usually they're underestimating pretty significantly. Like, oh, that only took me fifteen minutes. It's like, that took you an hour. So that's something, though, that we certainly could track and knowing, like, there are numbers that we can very easily see just from a you know, kind of looking at it through a data window, less looking at it from like a self-assessment window. We know that we typically check in X number of items per hour. We would be able to easily run a report to see, are we able? That's not a good example cuz we have the automated material handler doing that. You know, we know typically that we can do and checkouts now too. Okay, I'm gonna have to think about that one a little more, but I know that there's things that we can do that would that we could look at some parts of jobs, you know, like it takes on average an hour and six minutes to shelve a full cart, not in children's cuz those books are small, but like in fiction and nonfiction.
About something like even sick time, looking at the amount of sick time that's taken in January in previous years versus if we were to implement this, that could be something.
Yeah. What are the other things to look at with the you know, as far as the the attendance of people, not just for the month of December, but for those two weeks that are sort of that we're talking about, like, is that, you know, if the month of December, if the first half of December is pretty low, does it increase? Does it decrease? Like, what is it for those two weeks? When people are, a lot of people are off.
I would be really unhappy if I had young children. Yes, and grandchildren to have the library closed.
Feedback, I think you're gonna have a lot of patrons.
I really, I think that
Presentation.
Yes.
Back to the calendar, do you mind?
Barbara, do you wanna? I think that, or do you have the school one?
This one.
Yeah.
All right, before we start going, I'll start off. I think that we all want to show appreciation for the staff. I think we all know that they've had a hard two years as pretty much everyone in the community. I think we all appreciate everything they've done. I think we all appreciate everything they're gonna continue to do. The question that I think is really been put on the table is, is this specific proposal one that we wanna consider? Or might there be other proposals that we would rather consider? By that, I mean, we're gonna talk about giving staff time off rather than having four days. No, keep going back.
Oh, wait. Oh, I didn't put the slide in cuz I don't have my notes up. Never mind. I have some other options outlined that we can talk about too.
Okay, we go back to So looking at what we have in front of us, you start on the twenty fourth through the third. You have a period there of ten days where the library will be open for two days if we were to approve what's been proposed. That, to me, is very concerning because that, to me, says we are essentially closed during the December holiday period. And so that's why I say, you know, really, the issue is this proposal versus other proposals to show appreciation for the staff that we might wanna consider. And I'll be the screw. I don't really like this proposal. I would be much more in favor of a proposal that did other things like give additional time off, close early, open late, find other times during the year to give additional days for the staff to have long weekends or other time off. I just am very concerned when we look at this calendar the way it lays out to have the library closed that many days in that period, knowing from what we experienced in July with one unexpected closing day with a significant, you know, traumatic event in the community, what we received in the feedback and how, you know, things played out. So I think that, you know, I'd like to hear what other people think about the proposal and we can have Kate tell us some of her other ideas or alternatives to give us some things to kind of think about and consider.
I'm pretty much in agreement. I think that, you know, I think looking at a couple of days here and there, like, maybe the thirty first makes sense to to close, but I do think it, I think you're gonna have a lot of patron very unhappy if we were to close for that. And I think it it's also, I think, the library you expected to be open if, you know, there are certain things that you sort of, I think that people rely on being open during those breaks, like you're well, we're gonna be closed for two weeks. Well, that's when, you know, people try and schedule things. And there are certain things that I think you count on being open during that time. And I think that if our neighboring libraries aren't doing this as well, that's going to just sort of be more of an argument for, I think, patrons who will say, well, this town isn't doing it, this town So I think a couple of days here and there are like the thirty first probably.
I'm a little bit torn. I think one of the benefits of this is that it is a time when people would benefit from the time off and time with their families and thinking about kids being out of school, staff not having to work would alleviate potentially some childcare issues, and that could translate into a hiring benefit, a staff retention benefit, a morale benefit. I don't have kids. That's something we've all discussed at some point or another. And so I would never think to come to the library during this time cuz I'm gonna be at home doing whatever it is I do. So I don't have that lens, but as somebody who works in an organization that does have a winter break closure, it's something that does impact our staff on a regular basis. And we publicize it well, we communicate it well. We ensure that people know about it. And there's people who are frustrated a hundred percent, but it does have a retention benefit. And we close for a different period of time. It's a different organization. But I have seen the benefit of it. So I like the idea of floating holidays. I like the idea of time off. As somebody who would not be impacted by this, it's hard to have a clear feeling on it.
When do you, when does the university close?
We are closed from the twenty-third through the first every year.
Yeah, the university is. So I I guess I it it doesn't sit right with me. Just I feel that it is a time, I know when I did have young kids, that was where we went and we planned on it because we didn't travel during, we did a lot of vacations. So for me as a patron, I think it is, I am torn cuz I think it is such a nice benefit. I mean, if somebody told me in my office, I was gonna get the holiday off, I'd be so happy, but there is no way in my company that we would be able to do that. And we have a high strat. We work in the healthcare field. It is high stress. Yes, and it's gotten even more high stress. And I mean, you know, everybody's got their stories of stress and burnout. But I mean, doctors today who I work with, literally, it's, I had a horrible call with a doctor and it is, it's in life is just stressful. So we just have to find ways besides, I think, affecting the community with our stress, maybe. I don't know. That that's how I feel. I also don't understand the floating holiday thing. That was really, I think these slides are confusing me more than if we talked about what is that floating thing where you get a floater and then you have to take a floater?
Okay, so when the holidays fall on a weekend, you know, I'm actually gonna have Lori. Lori explains this better than I do.
I know about floating holidays. I do know. I have them. But you are mandated then when For this proposal, it would be. But typically, for a floating holiday, the employee has three months to use it from the date of the holiday of the floating holiday.
What do you mean by that?
So if, like, the December Christmas Eve floating holiday would have to be used by March twenty
Different than us. I was, for us, it's like just three holidays. So I would choose to take it on the Chinese New Year. So this would actually take away. So so I misunderstood that concept. So then that would take me away to celebrate something that's not a public holiday, but okay, but
We have one of those.
That's not, that's Okay, okay.
Yeah, like, these would not be a floating holiday if, like, the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth were like Tuesday, Wednesday.
So days that are in yellow, those are days that are holidays, but because they're on the weekend, the employees are given
Days to take and they have to use it within
But not anymore.
Well, not with this plan. They're forcing it on
Like, they're gonna take it in one chunk of time.
They're taking it in on the blue days.
So you don't have three months.
Twelve, twenty-four, twenty-nine.
Use the yellow on the blue.
Doing like maybe reduced hours or closing early or something like that, but I'm not sure how much that that doesn't really impact the full-time staff as much does it? Maybe, I'm not sure how things work. And that wouldn't necessarily affect everyone. So that may not be something you'd wanna float anyway, but that's a bad choice of the word. Anyway. And I mean, I guess, looking at this, the idea of giving everyone and like, instead of having one, doing two floating holidays would be, I think, yeah, a better sort of something that's good for the staff and employees and also, I think, balances out with not impacting the patrons. And then
Yeah, I would be concerned that if employees are saying, oh, I'm gonna have these floating holidays to use during this longer period. And now you're told, wait a minute, you have to use them these three days, that might get some negative
Yeah.
reaction as well.
Cuz then you lose them if you can't use them.
Right, but I mean, if I was thinking, oh, well, I have them to use in January or February, and all of a sudden told, no, you don't. You know, you're gonna have to use them in December. That would be something that might
If they planned a vacation and they were counting on those days.
Exactly.
Yeah.
All right. So Sharon, did you have any more thoughts? Or we, Abby, you're next.
I'm clearly.
So I kind of, I think Stacy put it well. I I don't feel, you know, not having the small kids argument to me, I I would be able to work around this. I definitely understand all of the stress and everything that's going on. I also work for an organization that has a year-end shutdown. I had it for the first time last year, and it was really awesome. So I can completely understand wanting to do that. I hadn't really thought about employees counting on the floating holidays. And, you know, like, wanting to use them within that three months. So that was a dynamic you just brought up that I hadn't thought was bigger going around. Honestly, I don't know. I mean, there is, I think we brought up another alternative of, I think you were saying additional floating holidays. I know a lot of the tech companies are doing what they call mental health days. And they're giving like an extra day a quarter. It's pretty common now. That could potentially be another alternative if, you know, this long closure isn't palatable. So I I don't know. I'm I'm really torn as well. I think that some of you that have kids and are like, you know, in that community are maybe closer to the way that people really use this during that time that I can't really speak to. So sort of rely on you guys for that perspective.
I definitely do not like that view where we close so many days. I've even just, I don't know if that thing was the high school where they take the, whatever the exam after the thing still exists. But nonetheless, I I don't, I don't like the idea of how many days this is closed. And obviously, we all care about the staff quite a bit, but I'm like, I I kinda wanna know, like, yes, having this extended period of time. Like, I, as a chunk to add, like, allow people to take, how much value is this to staff? Like, normally, do some people get to use their vacation time during? Cuz I usually save enough vacation time just to use. But because of the library opening doesn't, like, what's the minimum amount of people we need? Can we just be bearable? I'm okay not having reference or have one reference for the whole building. I think that would be okay. Like, is there a way? Like, it's a reduced service, but I like the ideas having it open, reduce the hours. I I just, the optics of this, to me, is worth more than the money in that like, staff money that was like the twenty, the twenty, thirty thousand. To me, that's the optics of this is worth more than that. At the end of the day, I think. But I I I think we should I I also like the idea of doing something for the staff, recognizing the, just how hard this is, and mental health and everything. And I'm open to, like, if we are the library that gave actual vacation days to the staff, I'm very open to that proposal.
You mean like the mental health days?
Yeah, just something like, especially Yeah, right. Have people, allow people to take that.
I, you're not gonna like anything I have to say here. Sweet Barbara is unhappy about this. Not for profit. We just talked about taxes and what it means to the community. I think the PR negative reaction would be terrible. I really do. I think that even if you don't have children somehow or other, there's a resource available that we pay taxes for. And I really believe that the negative impact would be greater. The second thing you're not gonna like is I think I'm tired of hearing about how stressed out everybody is here cuz everybody's stressed out everywhere. And I appreciate everything that occurs in this library and I appreciate the people in the investment, but you know what? Everybody's dealing with all of this. And I, when you talked about Kelly's experience, I don't know any job that doesn't have all those things not mentioned in the job description. Stuff happens. And I, I believe that we can be respectful, we can recognize, I don't know that we need to do something so special that we give them extra days off. I I appreciate, but I think that's an over
I I appreciate, but I think that's an overreaction. I would like to have had some days off from kids throwing up on my shoes and and kids running away from school. I just think there's a reality here that we are all dealing with, not just your staff. So with those comments, I am entirely against this. I think that you can do stress reduction programs. I think we can. Instead of giving food, maybe bring in a foot massage or whatever it is. I don't think that their stress is any greater. And as a public institution, we have to balance our responsibility as well.
Alright, so I think that overwhelmingly the feedback, Kate, unfortunately, has been, we like the idea of finding a way to. Recognize the distress that the staff has dealt with, but this is not the way I don't, I think that anyone really wants to go about it. So what are the alternatives that you were thinking of that maybe we spent a few minutes discussing?
Sure, um, so the alternatives that I was thinking of, what's, a lot of them have been mentioned, doing more. Days closed at other times of the year. We have um a- as part of the year, the security, um, the late opens for when we do security trainings. If we just, those are always on a Friday because Fridays are shorter, you know, we're only open till six instead of nine. Instead of opening, if we remain closed for the remainder of the day, giving staff that time, um, we also could um think as. About shortening this, like maybe doing the thirty first to the third, which would not then impact. Um, really the school break, other than what, other than the five hours, you know, that we would have been open from nine to two on the thirty first. Um, we could also, we could look at shortening the hours. I think a couple of people mentioned that. I would not recommend that. We're open sixty nine hours a week. We have staff working, you know, nine to five, one to nine, nine to one, eleven to seven. Like to be able to figure out a way to shorten the hours to provide that with, like, and then to have, to figure out the scheduling of like, well, okay. Hey, you get this, but then um like right now, we, like on the days, like for instance, New Year's Eve. When we close, you know, we get two hours, so. Full-time staff, if you normally, like, let's say New Year's Eve was on a Tuesday, and so we close then at three. Staff get two paid hours, but if they were normally Tuesdays is their evening and they work one to nine. Then they either have to come in and work the nine to two or they take vacation for the other, like, I guess what I'm saying is, there's a lot of logistics if we were to do. The shortened hours. Um, I do think that would be, you know, I mean, that is nice, but I just think. I I would need to think about it more to think about logistically, if there was a way that we could do it without it becoming a scheduling nightmare um. And so, and then I like Abby's idea um that she just floated of like just the mental health days of having, adding that um. To, you know, or also just adding other floating holidays for people that um celebrate different holidays. Um, so I think all of those are are things that staff would certainly very much appreciate um and. Yeah, so those would be some of the other options that I. So essentially, shortening this thirty first to the third or doing stuff more scattered throughout the year. And there's a couple of different options with that, and I can certainly put together more formal.
My only thought was changing a closing days, this, it doesn't, it seems like it's far in advance, but. People have already planned their vacations and if I hadn't planned one because I didn't wanna have to give up vacation and then. Well, behold, it becomes a vacation day that would really, that would really, I think that it's a little far. We're too close to it, I think, to be changing around vacation days.
I guess my question is, is there not an alternative to giving time?
Yeah.
I, why does that feel like the only way we can say thank you? I I think it's, it gonna cost money if it reduces services. I think it's a negative. Is there another way that we can think of? And again, I go back to the fact we're all stressed. A- and yes, we wanna acknowledge and appreciate. But I don't think anything has been extraordinary. Are there other ways that we, aside from giving time? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, let me ask, cause I like what you said a little while ago, which was the idea of doing something for the staff. To help them address stress. So if we were to say to Kate, in the next year, you can have a day to close the library and to do some sort of in-house. I don't know, we want to call retreat or whatever, to treat the staff to a day of stress reduction, which can be anything from, you know, bringing in. You know, people to help with the mental aspects, doing yoga, doing meditation, doing seminars on those kinds of things. Just for the staff in-house. Is that the kind of thing that people might say, okay, that would be something they could get behind?
I don't think so. I don't think so. If you're, if you're off, you don't wanna, it's, it's an obligation. It's another obligation. That's not what people are looking for. I agree, though, it's taking.
Different days off, whereas, so, and you're not, you're not closing the libraries, you're not impacting the patrons, whereas it's a floating holiday or something like that.
Let me just explain the reason why I say, because as a lawyer who, we have to do thirty hours of C L E every two years. And there's a mandatory portion of it that has to be on mental health and um, you know. Those types of issues. So there's a lot of seminars I get to sit through every two years that are focused on, um, what can you do to reduce stress? And to, you know, kinda go about your daily life in a way that makes you feel a little more comfortable and in control. And that's why I just brought it up. So I get the idea, literally, no one wants to close.
That there's a way to do it so it doesn't come out the way you just framed it, which is you have to go.
Right.
Um, there are workshops that can be done during lunchtimes where it's simple activities, whether it's breathing exercises. Or mindfulness, you know, I think that it can be something that's offered here and if somebody wants to partake. That's where it's a voluntary.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of things at play here, like, we're talking about stress and I'm hearing the conversation lean. Towards self-care instead of rest and what people need is rest from trauma and from persistent. Asks of their time and their energy and I've worked at places that fell into the trappings of foot massages or back massages at lunch. Lunch is also an employee's time um and I don't think this is the solution based on the conversation we heard. But rest and time away from work is different than coming in or being asked to participate in something. Or even having your self-care managed through your workplace. This is not a place of rest for people. This is their job. And even having that available as an opportunity doesn't align with the idea that we wanna honor. The experience of working here, the stress of working here, the trauma of working here for the last two years, not because this place causes trauma. But because the trauma in our country and in our world has trickled into this environment, so. I, for me, hearing the conversation, I'm worried that we're starting to ease into this staff appreciation conversation that is already on the agenda. And maybe we're just making a very good segue instead of focusing on a real issue and what can be done. By us or by the staff internally to address that long-term too. This isn't going away. It's not getting better. What can we institutionalize to show the staff that their humanity is seen and recognized? And that they do have the opportunity to take care of themselves.
I guess, uh, two things on that. I agree with what you said, Stacy. I mean, the time off is important. If we give, and Lori, this is kind of a question for you too, if we give additional floating holidays or mental health days or whatever we wanna call them. Um, can they be for one year? Are we then creating a policy? Like how?
We would update the employee handbook um to reflect the benefit of having that and it would need to be. I mean, it would be something else that we would need to track and keep track of.
That we have to put into a policy and do every year versus can we experiment?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we can certainly experiment. We can say like, we're do, like, much like we did with the COVID time off, like, hey, we're doing this, cause it's COVID. And so we're, we're giving, you know, this benefit while there's a, you know, um, worldwide pandemic. And so, yes, we absolutely could do it as just like a try it.
Flexibility to, like, what is the right amount? Like, do we wanna do two days, one a quarter? Where every, it's the same day and everybody's off or do we wanna give people floating holidays? I mean, there's a lot of different options within that. But um, you know, I do think that the extra time, if it's, yeah, that would be.
Just how much vacations do staff currently have?
It varies. So part-time staff do not receive any regular part-time, which is twenty to twenty-eight hours a week, receive forty-eight hours. Full-time staff start um if they are a, on the salary schedule, if they are a grade eight and under, they receive um two weeks. And then each year they get a little bit more until they reach a maximum of four weeks, which is pretty typical, as you know, in the library industry. Anyone that's a grade nine, which is librarian and up receives four weeks and that's the max amount um for vacation.
Do staff have trouble using it up due to scheduling issues? I'm just trying to think around, do I have to close the library to help?
Certainly some, certainly some staff do um uh, I would say, like, Anna, Lori and I are three, probably the biggest defenders. Um, but we do have, I would say that there are the usual suspects every year that we're talking to. Lori sends out multiple reminders like, hey, don't forget, schedule time off. We have some staff that are, you know, excellent. They plan it all out well in advance. We have other staff that aren't. Um, I will say that adding more days certainly, and I think that this is something I love. That, you know, we're maybe willing to explore this, but there is, we would also need to assess the impact that then has on the other staff. Because if the staff, if you're not there because you're taking your mental health day, which is good and excellent, what additional stress is it putting on it? Does that mean someone is working on the desk six hours during the day? Um, and then what is that doing? You know, is it having that ripple effect of what? What might then, it might help you, but then it might make the other person then get sick, you know, there's all the, those things. And some of that, we just can't know with a hundred percent certainty, but certainly, we know that if you don't have enough people to cover, you know. You're, you're gonna be putting extra stress on the staff, which we've seen um, right, as we've been working to get fully staffed again.
Right, so Kate, I think that overwhelmingly, I think the feedback you've gotten is. Go back, think up some other ideas and come and give another presentation at another meeting with alternative ideas that focus on some of the things that you. First positive feedback on. Um, so I don't think we're gonna ask for a motion here. I think we'll go ahead and move on. As Stacy was saying, to segue into the staff appreciation. I said it on the agenda, so. To give a little background for Stacy's benefit, in the past, we had had in November staff appreciation. Um, for quite a long time, it was a matter of the board having given some money and a certain few people, as Sharon smiles. Cause Sharon was typically one of the few people um going out, doing things and bringing in essentially food or um, you know, some sort of treats for the staff. During the week, right before Thanksgiving, um, right before COVID, that switched to each board member having picked a day in that week. And then each board member coming in, doing something slightly different, but it typically boiled down to each board member bringing in some form of food. With a certain budget in mind. Um, you know, it would be things like going to Costco, getting cookies, a candy or, you know, treats. Some people brought in pizza um to, you know, during COVID, um, when we were closed, not having, like, to do anything the first year, but then. Since then, of having moved away.
You did do something the first year, though. You guys gave money that we used for the staff lounge.
Right, we did something in the lounge, but we didn't do like bringing in food or something.
Yeah, right, like physically bring, like I brought my kids in and.
Doing like a board and a gift or item where the board pitched in and then it was one thing from the board as a whole. And so um, the question was, is there anything that we wanted to do as a board as a whole? Or would people want to go back to doing individual, you know, pick a day, you wanna do? My feeling is that I don't think people are still comfortable, yet comfortable with the idea of having community food where everyone's, you know. Taking something and it's kinda open for the community. I think we probably, if we're gonna do something, still need to do a, you know, board. As a whole, something from the board as a whole. Um, Kate, did you have ideas or suggestions?
Um, so I did not have a ton of suggestions, but I know, oh, Kelly went out.
You want me to go get her?
Yeah, could you, cause she just had a chance um. To pull some stuff from a staff survey to see, and I don't, I didn't have a chance to look at it.
You know, they didn't like the dared queen, right? Wasn't that not?
No, they did like.
And there was alternative.
I was just saying, I, uh, we're talking staff appreciation week and I um was saying, I did not have a chance to look at the survey results. But that you had, and so you could um share some of the things that staff had.
Um, do you mind if I pull it up?
Yeah.
This is in, it's usually the first weekend, week of November, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I remember Vera and I used to go crazy at Costco. We would just go and buy everything and she made a sign and. Oh, yeah, every day. I mean, there was like food left over from the day before and then the next person bring in like. It was cute. It's really cute. Yeah, I wonder who that sign is. Like she made like this little table sign and said, thank you for all you do for us and it was really cute, remember? I have not ever seen that.
Okay, so um, some of the things that we had asked staff about was, first, the possibility of doing. An event versus doing like smaller things where like bringing in snacks or um. Possibly subscribing to the Palm app as like a meditation and relaxation. Um, and so a lot of staff liked the idea of doing like a casual barbecue in the summer or fall. Um, over like more of a formal like outing at at a restaurant, like a dinner at a restaurant or something.
Um, do that dinner. We used to do that staff appreciation.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would do like a holiday.
Holiday, we did a big catered, it was so nineties.
We used to do it here in the library and then we switched in January.
But then I said, you know what?
January, that's.
Yes, we gave the money and we, we budgeted money.
Yeah, yeah, you guys did not, yeah, you guys.
We did this big dinner up on the floor, like we catered, we made a. The reference desk was a bar, yes. We bought all the alcohol at Costco, we like lined up, we got a bartender. Yeah, it was really a lot of work. And then the next year, you're like, we'll just take over from here.
No, but we had people going off the board and it was like this, it was a lot of work.
A lot, cause it was me and Vera and, yeah, and then I was like.
So the, the top two answers were um snack and treat days and a food truck. But there was also interest in like massage days or visits from therapy animals. Um, branded clothing items were a popular branded like.
Which we do do.
Yeah. Truck, yeah.
So we've done that in the past, right before the first work construction, we uh got the fleeces. So that anyone who was kinda directly impacted by the construction, I saw the warm underwear.
Staff still wear them and love them, so yeah, yeah.
So.
There's some other, yeah, I like the food truck I keep. We're going back to the.
Yeah, we had last, when did we have the taco truck? Was it last summer? That we brought in a taco truck um that we set up in the staff parking lot. Right, wasn't it tacos? Right? Do you remember when that was, Kelly? Wasn't it last summer? Was it, I think, yeah. And had it from like twelve to two, where staff that were working could come. I mean, and staff, if they wanted to drive over. Like working and they would show, you know, show your name tag to know that you're a staff or not. Yeah, yeah. And I wanna say, Anna would have this information. I wanna say that it was five or six hundred, like it wasn't. A lot, like they have a minimum. I think it was like a minimum that you had to pay regardless of, but then if you.
So thoughts? Anybody have preferences, concerns?
Well, with the large turnover.
Well, with the large turnover, maybe something branded, something really cool. Like I like the idea of a fleece and or.
We have done branded stuff and every new staff member gets a branded T-shirt. Yeah, I should say T-shirt. Yeah, and then we um Anna put together a land's end. Store that staff can, this is them spending their own money, obviously, but we have people like, we want more options and we want to be able to get stuff. So we've put to Anna put together a land's end store that has um fleeces. When was the last time that we did do? The gray fleeces, were those two years, twenty nineteen?
Can we do the um animals with like a food, a lunch, like bringing pizza with the um animal, the dog? It really does help Jay.
Lunch anyway, so.
It's like sixty, seventy dollars. Can you do, I don't know if you can get like a discount because you're a library.
Yeah, it would, that one is is uh more than, that was more of like a, hey, just in general and. Um a number of other libraries have done it. It's about three thousand dollars. It would be about three thousand dollars.
Would you think people would use that? I mean, is someone?
We had, I mean, yes, we had, what was the, it was like a fifty fifty on people thinking that would.
And fifty percent said they would use it.
Do you think that could be incorporated? Like there's a lot of like short meditations and there's the daily J. Do you think that that could something that could be incorporated? Like, hey, people are gonna do this at X times. I guess you can't do that with your schedule. I didn't know if there was a.
I like the, I mean, it doesn't works time of year, but I think the food truck's a very fun idea, but you can't really, you don't want to do that in November.
I mean, it's all we could.
But if we do food, can we coordinate a little more because of COVID and like just one?
All the food truck could just, right, we could just do a food truck.
Basically, you give us.
But then it's only the people that are here that day, right?
Right, yeah, but that's true for when you bring in treats.
But we would bring it, we had, we spread it over for a week and everybody brought something. Like seven days and so.
Yeah.
Typically, any day you were here, there was something for you.
Yeah.
I kind of like spreading it out, but I think. I know some of us brought pizza, like two people brought pizza. Like if we do that and do it over seven days, can we? Can we strategize a little more about what we're bringing on one day?
Right, right. I agree, because I've run in donuts and there are donuts from the day before.
So we strategize and we make things that are more like independently. You can take a piece of pizza, you're not licking the whole pizza like.
Hopefully, they weren't doing that before the pandemic either.
No, I don't understand why. They're still popular, like I don't want to put my hands in there. So maybe not something like that, but.
About like the little things of nuts like at rest, like.
There's a question though, is you want to do something that's individually wrapped so that if you are taking something that's not affecting the other persons?
I feel like, I know I'm like one person wearing a mask here, but I don't think that's that, you know, you can be, Kelly, sorry, me and Kelly. Like if it's a donut and you're just picking up a donut, I don't think they need to be individually wrapped, do they?
Um I don't not just.
Donuts would be, but I mean, you can, I mean, if you're talking like candies or cookies or something that you can't get them individually wrapped.
Well, I I don't know. I think we just get close on, I don't know, what do you?
I like the seven days of food because then every.
And I'll take one.
Because the food truck, it's only if you're there that day and otherwise you miss out on a staff application.
You know, I was a big fan of the seven days, Jay.
Like a second day?
It's so, it's so like rewarding personally for me when I go, I mean, I, you know, I went shopping and then I would come with my little kids. And we would come before, you know, the library opened, like, how do you get in? We knock on the back door and they'd be carrying stuff and. And like, this is so nice of you and you know, you did, it was such, it's like a mitzvah, like you, I don't know if they appreciate as much as I appreciated doing it. It was whenever, yeah, I mean, it's such like, listen, you take time out of your day, you spend your own money. It's a nice thing to do.
Do you think seven days is important? Is that, I don't know if it's six days or seven days.
Well, there's seven board members, so we typically do seven days.
Do you think that that spreading it out, is that, is that impactful? Like Lori, Kelly?
Yeah, yeah.
What's gonna come today?
Right, exactly.
I say we bring it back.
I I'm I'm all.
Schedule that we like the sort of. Google forms that go around where you sign up for your day and what you're bringing so that we don't end up with five days worth of.
The first question was what week if we're gonna do that?
It's usually like November fifth, right?
It's very specific, Gabby. Um I mean, I remember being the first weekend. I thought it was. In November, but she thought it was closer to Thanksgiving.
I actually think it's the week before, because that's when my birthday is and I feel like I remember it was often that week.
Official week or do we just?
You can do it whenever you want.
Right, there's no official.
It's not codified like.
Straight days though, wasn't like seven days during the month of November.
I like doing it at the beginning. Then you ran into like people having so much food at Thanksgiving.
I hate to shop for myself.
Recharge guest prices feed.
Jay, Jason.
Yeah, it's gonna be the Sharon and Abby week.
No, we're good. We'll put your name on it.
Everything can be.
And if you guys would like, we can give you a list of staff dietary restrictions.
Oh, right. That's what we need on top of that. Are you kidding me?
I agree, like, listen, if you, yeah. I know, I know.
I like, so it can all.
I know, but.
The very sweet image to me.
Lauren, did you, did we ever do that when you were here?
We did, so and I'm so embarrassed. The first week we did it, I completely forgot and I was just like, just did not.
I did not remember.
And then I think I may have.
Then you bought a cake or something and I remember you saying it's because you didn't do something, but then you bought a cake for something else.
All other years.
What date do you have putting in?
Are we doing the week before Thanksgiving?
In November.
So like November sixth to the twelfth, the Sunday to Saturday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or the.
Before that's holiday.
A little bit of time after Halloween. Yeah, that works.
Instead, don't, yeah, yeah. Okay, so is everybody taking a day tonight?
Hang on, that's election day or what's?
It's the eighth is election day.
Does that impact the library?
Well, we'll be open like usual and encouraging staff to vote.
Okay, alright.
For any of these veterans state, does that impact the library?
We will be putting up some displays and I usually we do a program or two, so no, yeah, we're good.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Good, so make sure people put what they're.
So Jennifer's gonna send out like a Google sheet to fill in which day you want and what.
Find us how many people or maybe even when you send it out, how many people are typically in the library any one day so we know how many people were feeding.
It depends on the day. It ranges anywhere from forty to sixty-five, but not on Sunday. No.
And what is the?
I'll take Sunday.
I haven't said anything yet. I'm out of town that Sunday, so it's yours.
What do we usually spend? I don't remember.
Oh, boys.
Yeah, I.
I I don't, we can't put a number.
I know, it's just, well, but you.
It has to be reasonable.
It was like seventy dollars for the Dairy Queen things, right?
Was it?
Last year, yeah.
Yes. Oh, my gosh, I did not.
Food is expensive, peeps.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, last year, when we first did a J, we'd be like twenty dollars.
And I had it was twenty-five dollars a person.
Well, first this was twenty, then we're like, oh, we better do twenty-five.
I think I, once I did forty or like forty or fifty for pizza.
Right, but then I never spent twenty-five, because there's no way you can go to Costco and you can't even buy bananas for twenty-five bucks.
What kind of bananas are you buying?
Okay, I'm just losing it. Okay, okay, Jay, I'll do your day.
We don't, Sharon, we don't want to, we want to make sure that other people want to do this, because I feel like it's just.
I'm gonna need a reminder.
Of course I'll do it. Oh, my gosh, I just like to complain.
But we, we could do a vote. Do we want to do this or do we want to do blizzards? I really don't want to push people into doing this if they don't want to.
I was surprised that people like Blizzard, but that's me.
We also, I mean, and then we got like non-dairy stuff for the non-dairy people.
Can we, can we vote on one or the other? I I really don't know what people think.
That's fine.
Spirited discussion. What what do you want, Jay?
What I want?
Yeah, if you.
I want the least, you know. I'm fine with Blizzard, but I'm fine if, you know.
Just to be clear, the Blizzard thing was they were majorly discounted last year because they were doing some type of.
Donations went to Lord.
Yeah, I think that was it, yeah, but we can, I'm sure, sure get a deal.
I think by Blizzard, she means like a group thing as opposed to.
Oh, yeah, oh, not literally.
But can we just vote on that? I mean, not an official vote.
Go ahead and run, go around.
Put your head down.
Um I am good taking a day.
I would love to take a day.
I would love to.
I would like to take a weekend day.
I would reluctantly like to take a day.
We're back, let's get the sign out.
So.
You guys have kids in town.
FYI, if you guys do decide to do decorations, we do no longer do balloons at the library. Okay, except that we're not gonna do Harry Potter because of. I know, it's a lot, it's a lot of stuff. I'm sorry, Abby. We could do that because what you could do, pets, pets are always a win. Okay, so.
We can figure out.
Oh, I think Jennifer will, Jennifer and I will will get a spreadsheet out that you guys can sign up for the days and say what you're.
Okay.
Doing, and then do you want to put a dollar amount or?
Well, I mean, I think everyone's gonna do their own thing, but it's a guideline.
I mean, yeah, like.
I'm just saying, last year we spent seventy. I'm not saying anyone needs to spend that, but feed fifty people for how you. For the blizzards, this, I would say this is likely less.
Do we supply paper goods or should we buy en masse a bunch of?
We have paper goods.
Okay.
Those paper goods there and utensils.
Compostable.
Yes, indeed.
Okay, so I think we can move on to our next item, which is the.
Yeah, so um you may remember that spring we tried to do.
I got my booster today. I think it's done something to my personality.
Okay.
We're almost done, we're getting through.
We're we're almost there, okay. Um so for the fall library visit, um you may recall that we had tabled this last year and then tried to do it in the spring. Um and so with the caucus stuff happening as well as with the um EDI training. We can certainly look at dates and do Palatine or choose a different library. Or we can certainly table this again, either look at it again in the spring. I know that was a challenging time to get dates or just table it again for the next year. So. Option one is pick a date, find a library that can do it on that date. Option two is table it until spring. Option three is table it and do it next fall.
When you say spring, do you mean not the fourth quarter and push it into the first quarter of twenty?
Yeah, I'm thinking like M- March to May, because you don't really want to have to do it in like January or February, right? Cause who knows what it'll be like.
I don't mind doing it in January or February.
When did we go to Skokie?
It was definitely, I think it was Jan.
I mean, we can do, because I wouldn't, I couldn't.
It was either fall or winter, but it was.
Winter because um okay, because Carlos, his gigantic car.
Yeah, yeah, so that was good. So we, yeah, we could do that too. I just always think like you don't travel in winter.
Yeah, but we're not, we're traveling in, you know, general area.
It is nice to see buildings during daylight hours.
I'm thinking just, you know, if we know that people are typically having issues in spring, just say, let's try it again next spring, just sets us up to fail again. As opposed to saying, is there a date, you know, between now and March that we can find? Even if it's not during the next two months when we have all these other things going on.
So shoot for like January, February?
Well, I mean, do people have a preference?
I think if we throw out a few days and two days in January and two days in.
The idea that Kate and I talked about was we'll pick the date and then she'll try and see if um Palatine is available. If not, then Kate will look for an alternative on that date. Cause it seems to be that it's harder for us to find a collective day that we can all do something as opposed to a location and go to.
And there's plenty of other libraries that have renovated in the area, so.
By the time we do this.
I know.
Right, so that was it on the new business. Um so that brings us.
Are you saying you're gonna try and find a date January and February then?
Yeah, you're gonna do a.
Okay.
Survey monkey, I guess.
Jennifer's favorite thing is to find dates.
Just poor man in the corner.
Now normally you're at home by now.
So we're now back to the unfinished business, which is the compensation philosophy follow-up, but I need a motion. To move into a closed session. I'll read the motion. We go into closed session pursuant to Illinois statute five, I OCS one twenty slash two, suit two. Plucked and negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or the representatives for deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. It's a motion.
No moves.
Thank you, Abby. Second, Sharon, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Call, Mr. Gobindar?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries wheel. Hey, we're back from closed session. Uh can I have a motion, please, to approve the compensation philosophy and compensation strategy? That'll be used in a salary benchmarking process for the fiscal year as presented to the board in the closed session to be inserted into the minutes.
No moves.
Thank you, Abby. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Morat. Can we have a roll call, please, Jennifer?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Gobindar?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, the motion passes. That is all of the old business on the agenda building. We have in our next meeting, the annual audit presentation. Uh I know I was contacted by the auditor via email to get some information. I'm pursuing, Jamie, you probably didn't contact us. No. They normally contact the treasurer. Um and Abby, have you been contacted? And where are you, secretary? Have you been contacted? Okay, so.
I'll check with Anna.
Yeah, mine was just an email with background. For that to look forward to, the updated fiscal year twenty-four levy, so more from Anna and Kate. And then a review of our serving our public for the annual per capita grant.
And then I'll bring a revised holiday schedule, because we do need to approve the actual holiday schedule.
Okay.
So.
Alright, so anything else anyone wanted to ask be considered for the next meeting? By hearing unseen none, I will declare this meeting adjourned.